2015. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Laura?
Here.
Mrs. McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome. In the summertime, it's fairly rare to have a full house, and we have a nearly full house tonight, but we have a lot of exciting things on our agenda, a lot of momentous occasions this evening. If you would like to follow along on our agenda, you'll find agendas just outside our door. They're either on the table or on the counter there. If you haven't picked up one, feel free to do so. If you're following along at home, you can follow along on the agendas you can find online. If you go to www.lavoniapublicschools.org and hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and follow along with our meeting this evening. It may be a lengthy one, so you may need an agenda. This is a regular meeting, or what some folks refer to as a voting meeting. You may not hear the length of discussion that you would expect, and that is because the items that are coming before the Board tonight have been brought before the Board, typically two, sometimes three times, occasionally more than that. So by the time they hit a meeting, a general, or a regular meeting tonight, we have discussed them at length. You'll hear some discussion, but if you're looking for more discussion on Board items, I suggest that you follow along with our Committee of the Whole Meetings. Those are also found on our website. That's where we do a lot of discussion, a lot of question and answer. We frequently ask the Administration to bring back more information to the Board. They can get lengthy, but if you're looking for a lot of questions and answers, that's where you would like to follow along. The first, or the item that we are on right now is Item 3, Communications. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
I move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District acknowledge that Dr. Randy Leepa has significantly contributed to the well-being of the school district, its students, and employees, and congratulate him for his dedicated service to Lavonia Public Schools.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Dr. Leepa, would you join me at the podium? This is a day that several months ago, I got wind might come, and I just decided to live in denial for a long, long time, until I could not any longer. You have been a tremendous superintendent for this school district. You're the only superintendent that I remember, at least as far as working under, and it's been my privilege and my honor. You have mentored cabinet members, you have mentored Board members, you have mentored so many staff in this district. You've taught us to do the kind of work that we do to keep Lavonia Public Schools a lighthouse district. I cannot imagine replacing you, and yet it is our task, and we will go forth and we will do that. The only part that makes me feel any better about this whole situation right now of losing you is the fact that Wayne County, and therefore the state of Michigan, gets you, and therefore we still get a part of you. Wayne County and the state of Michigan is blessed to have you. They're blessed to have your intelligence, they're blessed to have your strong advocacy for high-quality public education. The students in our county and in our state will be blessed to have you. The Board has prepared a resolution tonight for you, and it reads as follows. Resolution of appreciation for the service of Dr. Randy A. Leepa, Superintendent of Lavonia Public Schools. Whereas the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District is desirous of publicly recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of a district leader who has given his time and talents as a service to others. And whereas Dr. Randy A. Leepa has devoted 21 years of dedicated and outstanding leadership as Assistant Superintendent for Business and Superintendent of Lavonia Public Schools, contributing greatly to the well-being of its students, its employees, and the community. And whereas Dr. Randy A. Leepa has served the students, employees, and community of the Lavonia Public Schools School District well by placing the needs and interests of students first, making informed and conscientious decisions to keep our district academically and financially sound throughout difficult periods. And whereas Dr. Randy A. Leepa has been an intelligent and passionate advocate for high-quality public education and a voice for our community at the local and state level on behalf of students in LPS and throughout our state. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District does hereby express its deep appreciation to Dr. Randy A. Leepa for his visionary leadership and countless contributions to our school district, and extends best wishes for an enjoyable and rewarding experience as he continues to serve students as Superintendent of Wayne Reeser. As is customary when we have Board members leave our school district, and you are certainly part of the Board team, there is no doubt about that, we present you with a schoolhouse. The schoolhouse, I hope, will sit somewhere in your new office.
Absolutely.
Reads with heartfelt appreciation Lavonia Public Schools and on the other side, Dr. Randy A. Leepa, Superintendent.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of brief comments. First of all, I want to recognize that I do have a couple of members of my family here, my wife Peggy and my son Chris. If they can wave, Chris, come on, wave a little bit more so I can see you on TV. There we go. As you know, I have three kids. My middle daughter, Kelsey, just graduated from Michigan State and is actually moving today. Today's moving day, she's moving from Michigan State back down to the Detroit area where she's going to be working, and many of you know that my oldest daughter lives in Geneva, Switzerland, so she gets a pass for not being here tonight. Just very, very briefly, and obviously this has been a remarkable journey, I'm beyond blessed to have this opportunity over the last 12 years and the confidence that the Board of Education past and present have provided for me. You know, today we have a lot of really exciting and cool things on the agenda. We're going to be appointing a lot of new administrators in our school district, and that's always one of the funnest things that we do here at the Board level, and so that's what it's about. It's about change. And so we've got some remarkable administrators coming in to serve our school district tonight, and as you know, you were appointed a remarkable person to take care of the superintendent responsibilities for the next several months anyways, in Andre Oquist. We have an amazing team that's sitting next to her that are going to help her all along the way, and I am not a stranger, guys. I am the Wayne Reeser Superintendent. I'm responsible for providing support to Lavonia Public Schools, and believe me, that's why I'm interested in actually doing the work. Hopefully, we can do some things at the county level that will provide some relief to the day-to-day things here at Lavonia, so we can continue to do the phenomenal things that we're doing. So heartfelt thanks, and I'm not going anywhere. I'm still around, and I know I'll be seeing you all very soon. Thank you.
Board members, are there comments that you would like to share? Mr. Centers?
Yeah, I'll go first. So conceptually, I knew that the job of school superintendent is a very difficult job. However, now I've been sitting, you know, down the table from Randy for over a year now, and it is an enormously difficult job, especially right now in the times we're facing in Michigan. It's so rare to see someone that handles it as well as he does. So I feel just really privileged. You know, I always thought when you have someone that's really exceptional, just watching them work, watching how they interact, what guides them, is just such a valuable thing. So I feel privileged just to be able to do that. You know, it would never occur to Randy Leepa to treat the people that clean the building any different than the most influential state legislator that walks in here. He's that kind of person. He treats everyone the same, everyone with respect. It's exceptional to work with him because of that alone. So I want to thank you, 21 years of amazing service to this district. It has benefited me as a student, as a Board member, our community, so thank you so much,
Other Board members who would like to share? Mrs. Jarvis? We may as well go right on down the line. I think we're all going to, we're going to jump in here, so Mrs. Jarvis, go ahead.
Thank you. I have a hard time thinking of things to say, and you know, that says something right there. 21 years, 21 years ago, my kids weren't even born, I wasn't thinking about schools, and you were already sowing the seeds for the way our district has grown, which is to say it's grown phenomenally. We're one of the few districts that's actually surviving in a time when survival is what it's all about, and that's directly attributable to the work you have done. When you have a school district that runs smoothly, you don't notice things. Everything just goes day-to-day, and people are not aware of all that it takes to make that happen. That's a testimony, I think. It says a lot about how you do your job, that people are not aware of how involved that job is. The more I learn about that job, the more I know I would never want it. You have done a tremendous job. I am ecstatic that you'll still be in Wayne County, because I can't imagine trying to do what we need to do without your influence. Thank you.
Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Well, not to sound like a broken record, I'll try to keep it simple. Thank you, Randy, for all your years of service and everything, the hard work that you put into the school district, and I wish you the best of luck over at Wayne County, and I'm sure things will go the way you'd like them to, so congratulations and wish the best of luck.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
I too want to thank Dr. Leepa for all of his years of service. In my decision to become a Board member, one of those deciding factors was that Dr. Leepa was our leader, and I had gotten a chance to know him and respect him, and he's the kind of guy that makes the tough decisions, and he leads us and helps us feel confident that we're choosing the right decision, even though they're tough and it's hard. And he always comes through and understands that sometimes those decisions don't always impact everyone the same way, and yet he strives to help everyone work through those changes, and I just, I can't say enough, and I'm certainly glad that you're going to be around to influence us and hopefully get those legislators in line for us.
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you, President Burton. I'd like to follow in the thoughts of my fellow Board members, and thank you, Randy, for the tremendous job that you did the years that you were here. You're incredibly creative, and you have a wonderful ability to think out of the box, and that has helped us to gain and be positive and continue to be the lighthouse district that we are. It's not going to be an easy task that we have to fill your shoes with mixed emotions. We wish you well. We're going to miss you greatly, and we're going to look forward to all the great things that you're doing to, for all the students of Wayne County. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. You know, Randy, I spent a lot of time over the weekend trying to think of all the nice things I could say, and I wanted to write them down, and quite honestly, I drew a blank. I mean, really, look at my sheet. It's blank.
I could have wrote down a couple.
I mean, this is a man who eats popcorn at his desk, for crying out loud.
Skinny popcorn.
Skinny popcorn, nonetheless, but all seriousness aside, Randy, you've been a real friend and mentor to me and the Board, to which I really, really appreciate that. Dan said it, I think, best, that it doesn't matter who you come in contact with, regardless of who it is, in this building or any other building, but you have the highest respect and dignity in the way you treat people, and I think that comes across. I think that is shown by the way people feel about you and the way you do your job. One question I want to ask, are you leaving the helipad?
Yeah, it was a gift.
Well, okay. You know, you took our fight to Lansing, everything that you could possibly do, and quite honestly, I'm not sure why Reeser wouldn't hire you after I had that phone conversation with them, but they did, and we're expecting great things, as usual, and best of luck. And by the way, now I get someone, no offense to you, but a little prettier to sit next to me at least for a while.
You should not send me today.
Yeah. I'm done. Congratulations and thanks, Randy.
I shared most of my thoughts when I was at the podium, but I just want to thank you for being the Superintendent that you have been for our district. It's going to be really strange having somebody else taking over these tasks, and I think the thing that strikes me the most from my position is, as a Board member, is the amount of trust that we have in you is immense. If we have a question, if we have a judgment call, if we are just not sure how something was done four or five years ago, we can go to you immediately, and I'm sorry, but your phone must ring constantly. But that kind of trust is just built up over such time. That's the kind of thing that, no matter how experienced another individual may be coming into your office, it's going to take some time to try to build that up, just from the knowledge and experience. Don't be surprised if we kept your cellphone number and we're going to keep calling.
He's still on my speed dial.
Oh, yeah.
One?
Yeah. But thank you so much for everything you've given this district. We could go on and on, but we do have an agenda we've got to get to, so for the benefit of everybody else. Thank you for your service to the school district. It's been immense. Do you have any other thoughts you'd like to share? You're glad this part is done, huh? We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. As is customary, following our honoring of individuals at our communications portion, we are going to take a brief five-to-ten-minute recess so that those who are in attendance tonight can congratulate our honoree. We will return from recess in about 10 minutes, and then we will go on with many more celebrations to be had over the evening. We are recessed. Thank you.
Welcome back to the continuation of the regular meeting of July 27, 2015. If you are following along in your agenda, we are on item 3B, Written Communications. Do any board members have written communications they would like to share? Seeing none, we are on 3C, Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips. Are there any members of the audience who wish to communicate with the board at this time? All righty. The next item on our agenda is response to prior audience communications, of which I have none. I do, however, want to do what I will do customarily until we have our new superintendent in place, which is give an update on our superintendent's search. As we all know, Dr. Leepa has been selected as the Wayne Reese Superintendent. This board takes that responsibility of refilling that position very seriously. We have decided to utilize a search firm to make sure it's done as well as we could possibly do it. We invited, I'm sorry, we interviewed six search firms and we hired the Michigan Leadership Institute to oversee the search for us and with us. This board has met with MLI, developed a calendar that we can all agree on and go forward with. This past week, MLI met with various focus groups to develop a profile of what exactly that we are looking for as a community in a superintendent. Tomorrow, there's going to be one other opportunity if folks have not yet had an opportunity to meet with MLI and would like to do so to share their thoughts on superintendent. Staff has an opportunity earlier in the day and the community as a whole has an opportunity at 6:00 tomorrow evening, Tuesday evening, in the board office. I believe it'll be held in this room. So if you'd like to do that, you do not need to pre-register. You just feel free to come on over and share your thoughts. There's also on our website and our Facebook page, there is a button that's labeled "Talk To Us." If you would like to anonymously or with your name, share any thoughts on what you think we should be looking for in a superintendent. We will take your comments very seriously. The job has been posted. The applications are due August 28 to MLI. We are devoting the month of September to interviews and follow-up processes. Assuming we get the desired candidates, we will go forward. If we do not, we will start the process over because we are not going to fill the job with somebody. This board is determined to fill the job with a very qualified individual. We would like to have our new superintendent seated sometime in the month of October. As I said, the board takes this process very, very seriously. MLI and/or the board are working weekly on this process and will continue to, and I am confident that we will find strong candidates to fill the position. So we will go on with our agenda at this time. We are now on item four, our consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the special meeting of July 20, 2015. 5B, minutes of the regular meeting of July 20, 2015. 7A, bills for payment, July 28, 2015.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Laura. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item six, Instruction Matters. 6A is Approval to Purchase Eye-Ready Diagnostic Assessments. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to purchase the online adaptive assessment program, Eye-Ready Diagnostic Assessments, for math and reading from curriculum associates. The purchase includes annual renewable student licenses for eye-ready diagnostic math and eye-ready diagnostic reading at a total cost of $49,680.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield and Mrs. Alice. Would you like to share some information about this with us?
I would be delighted to. Thank you very much, President Burton, and good evening, everyone. I am very excited about the motion that the board will take tonight on the recommendation that we are bringing to you for the purchase of Eye-Ready Diagnostics. And I thought what I would do tonight is just share and summarize some of the key points that I shared with the Board of Education during a very lengthy presentation during the committee of the whole meeting last Monday evening. At that time, I had shared with the Board of Education that the Michigan Department of Education requires that we assess students annually in grades one through five in both reading and mathematics. And in Livonia Public Schools, we have developed a math assessment to meet the math requirement, and we use the Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark Literacy Assessment to meet the reading requirement. Well, this past school year, our Title I schools, we have eight of them, they use their Title I funds to purchase the Eye-Ready Mathematics Assessment and the Eye-Ready Reading Assessment. And they administered it to, some schools administered it to all their students and some selected students. Some school administered it to selected students, depending on the type of school they were, whether they were targeted assistant school or school-wide school, as well as the amount of funds that they had for these purchases. The Eye-Ready Diagnostic Test is, as mentioned in the motion, is an adaptive online assessment that can be administered multiple times throughout the school year to students. The content of the assessment is aligned to the Common Core standards and thus it's aligned to our math and to our reading curriculum. The type of items that are included on the assessment parallel the type of items that our students experienced this past spring when they took the state's new M-step. The reports that teachers received from these assessments provides them with diagnostic information about student strengths, as well as areas in which students struggle, all the way down to the sub-skill level. The reports also provide teachers with an action plan on what they can do to support students through differentiated instruction, through whole-class instruction, through small group instruction, as well as for Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. This past year, central office administrators had a chance to visit the Title I schools and observe the assessments being administered. We had an opportunity to discuss the benefits and the effectiveness of the Eye-Ready Assessments with both Title I principals and their interventionists. The Division of Instruction had a lengthy conversation about the effectiveness of the assessments, and we evaluated our current elementary assessment program. And we're able to determine that by adopting this assessment, the math assessment, district-wide in archay through sixth-grade classrooms, we were able to replace our district-developed assessment with the Eye-Ready Math Assessment. And then we are going to be able, with this motion, to expand the use of the Eye-Ready Reading Assessment to additional schools beyond the Title I school. So we'll have a larger pool of students and a larger pool of assessment results to analyze next year to determine if this is an assessment that we want to adopt district-wide, and if so, what reading assessments could it possibly replace. So that led to tonight's recommendation. The total cost for the annual subscription, which was mentioned earlier in the motion, is $49,680, which does include a $5,520 discount, which is a 10% reduction on the license cost per unit. The funding for this purchase will come from the district's Technology Readiness Infrastructure Grant. And once again, I would like to thank Mr. Phil Francis, our current Administrator of Employment Services, who was our federal grants coordinator and our Title I principals and the interventionists for the role that they played in bringing this recommendation to the board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. As you mentioned, we did have a lengthy discussion about this last Monday night. Are there any other questions from board members on this item? Did you have a question? Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Alice, for the work that you and your whole team put into getting this ready for us.
Thank you. On behalf of all of our elementary principals and teachers, I thank you for this motion. I know they will be very pleased.
Great, thanks. The next item on our agenda is item 7B, Approval of Bid Results for Concert Instruments, Band Equipment, 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of school concert instruments, band equipment, from Cassico for a cost of $94,207.20, Marshall Music for a cost of $20,334, Washington Music for a cost of $244,454, and Wanger Corporation for a cost of $960, for a total amount of $359,955.20.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And Ms. Abby and Mr. Archibald, would one of you like to address this item for us?
I'll take this one. Thank you very much. This is an item that was part of our 2013 bond that was approved, was the replacement of music equipment. You'll recall, earlier this year, we replaced some of the marching band equipment, and tonight we're bringing you concert equipment, both band equipment and string equipment. First bid is for the band equipment. We did have an opportunity to look in detail at both of these bids at our committee meeting last week, and you may recall, you do have the bid tabulation in front of you, as well as the recommendation and detail in your board packet this evening, but you may recall that what we did was look at every one of these line items, line item, and find the lowest responsible bidder for each piece of equipment, and that's why you're seeing that we're recommending for different vendors to purchase this equipment this evening. So we did do that, and there was savings of about $30,000 by going through this process just for the concert equipment alone. There were seven vendors that responded. Not one vendor had a complete bid that was the lowest bid, so it was an opportunity and a challenge for us to go through and find the lowest responsible bidder, but that is what we're recommending this evening. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Ms. Abby on this item? Mr. Centers?
Just remind us again, our understanding is that some of this equipment is older than most of us seen at the board table here.
Yeah, not all of us.
Not all of us. Maybe not Mr. Johnson.
Yeah. Steve can jump in if he wants, but I understand that, yeah, some of this is original to the district and maybe before we were even Livonia Public Schools. So, yeah, some of this equipment is original, and I think this will be a very, very nice addition for our music department this year. They're very much looking forward to this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? No? All righty, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 7C, Approval of Bid Results for Concert Instruments String Equipment, 2013 Bond. May I have a motion?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of school concert instruments, string equipment from Marshall Music for a cost of $45,183, Char Products for a cost of $39,197, and Wanger Corporation for a cost of $1,296, for a total amount of $85,676.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. And Ms. Abby, would you like to address this item also?
Thank you very much. Again, we did send this bid out, four-string instruments for our concert instruments, and we did receive response from five vendors. Again, we did not have one complete bid that met all of our specifications, so we did go through again and find the lowest responsible bidder for each of these pieces of string equipment, and we are, again, very pleased to bring this forward to the board so that we can get this equipment in and ready for school as soon as possible. Again, happy to answer any questions.
All righty. Are there any questions from Ms. Abby on this item? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Abby, I'm sorry, are there still one or two pieces of equipment that had to go out either to be, we had to rebid because they didn't have the proper piece of equipment or they, nobody offered?
Yeah, it was discontinued. It was a drum from the first bid, so we will have to go get that.
That's the only piece that was?
Correct.
Left out of the whole puzzle?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for board? All righty, and thank you again to our community. This is one of many, many items that's being replaced with the benefit of the bond that our community passed, and those who are involved in the arts are so appreciative that they're not using this equipment that, as Mr. Centers said, is, a lot of it's from the 1960s. So thank you to our community for these items. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is 7D, Approval of Bid Results for School Buses, 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. McDonald.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the bid recommendation of five mini buses at the cost of $244,825 from Midwest Transit Equipment, Marshall, Michigan, ten passenger conventional school buses at a cost of $845,450, and five passenger special needs school buses at a cost of $514,185 from the Holland Bus Company, Holland, Michigan, for a total cost of $1,604,460.00.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this item?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, this is a purchase from our 2013 bond. You may recall that in total, we approved in our budget for the bond a replacement of 60 buses. We have replaced 20 previously, two years ago. We are scheduled to replace 20 this year and then another 20 or 21 at the end of the project. We did go out for competitive bids and received two responses. Those bids were evaluated to make sure that we chose buses that met our specifications and was the lowest price between those two vendors, and these buses did. There were some alternates proposed that were not acceptable to the district, so we did not pick those alternates. And these vendors are the lowest responsible bidder to meet our specifications. They're both good companies, and we're happy to move forward with this recommendation.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? And for the benefit of the public, Ms. Abby mentioned that we're purchasing 20 buses over three different years, and that is so that when they're nearing the end of their useful life, they will not all be dying on us at the same time either. So trying to stretch out the useful life as much as we can of these machines. We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is 7E, Approval of Bid Results for Pavement Replacement Sinking Fund. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District award the bid for pavement replacement project to Best Asphalt Incorporated, Romulus, Michigan, for a total cost of $228,500, and authorize the superintendent or his/her designee to sign and execute contracts with the approved vendor.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Ms. Abby?
Thank you very much.
Would you like to address this?
Yes, this is a sinking fund project for the summer. This is a typical sinking fund project that we would do, which is upgrading or replacing pavement at various schools. We did have a discussion at our committee meeting on this project as well. We did go out for competitive bids, and we are recommending the lowest responsible vendor that will actually meet our timeframes and meet all of the efficiencies to get this done before school gets started. And we'll see these over the next several years. You'll see that these are schools that we did work, renovation work with our bond work last year, and while we certainly knew there was some asphalt or paving work to be done last year, we have to wait till the construction's done so that, you know, have all that equipment out there and have it ruined in the middle of construction. So we'll see some of this summer's projects next year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All righty. Are there any questions from the board? No? We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have, the next item on our agenda is 7F, Approval of Bid Results for Athletic Training Services. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve St. Mary Mercy Livonia for athletic training services and authorize the superintendent or his or hers designee to execute final contracts with St. Mary Mercy Livonia on behalf of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this?
Yes, thank you very much. As you know, from time to time, although it isn't required by law to go out for bid for services provided to the school district and the school board, from time to time, we do that as a matter of practice with different services, just to look for efficiencies, look if people are sharpening their pencils, obviously, just see what else is out there available to the school district. So we did do a formal RFP, asking to provide the same services that we're receiving today. We're not unhappy with the firm that's been providing the services, but again, it's one of those things that we do from time to time to of those things that we do from time to time to just see what else is out there. We received two bid responses, one from the current contractor and one from St. Mary Mercy Livonia. St. Mary Mercy Livonia was a little bit less in price and very eager to do the work, and while we're not unhappy with the services, again, that we had from the previous vendor, there are some savings here in our athletic fund, so we do feel it's appropriate to go ahead with St. Mary Mercy and award them the contract. And we're very excited to provide that opportunity to actually a contractor in, in Livonia. So we are pleased to bring this recommendation forward this evening.
All righty. Are there any questions from the board? Nope. Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is 7G, appointment of owner's representative for sinking fund projects. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
That would be the elderly, Mr. Johnson.
The one older than the band instruments.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District appoint Plant Moran Cressa as the owner's representative for the district's sinking fund projects and authorize the superintendent or his/her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts with Plant Moran Cressa on behalf of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. Ms. Abby, you're up again.
Thank you very much. Again, this was an item that was brought forward to our committee last week, and we had an opportunity to have a lot of discussion on this topic. Greg Van Kirk from Plant Moran Cressa was here to make a presentation and, and have a discussion with the Board of Education. But what we are asking the board, what this resolution is asking the board to do tonight is to approve Plant Moran Cressa as an owner representative for our sinking fund. So as Plant Moran Cressa, I'll just call him Cressa from now on, is our owner's rep on the bond and will be for several more years as we complete this project, as we look at our long-term facility plan, we think it makes sense, as we'll be incorporating the sinking fund resources along with the bond resources, to complete the projects that the Board of Education has prioritized in that long-term facility plan. It makes sense for Cressa to help us oversee those projects, as they are in our buildings every day, working with our CMs, working with our architects, working with our staff. As you know, we did hire Plant Moran Cressa as a, for a short term, to go out and do an analysis of all of our buildings, so they are literally walking every inch of all of our buildings to help us put together and update that long-term facility plan and prioritize how to use our sinking fund. So they'll be doing, they've already almost completed that project, and we'll be bringing that to the board probably later, this late summer or early fall. It makes sense to have that resource of Plant Moran Cressa, as they are already in our buildings, they know our buildings, they already know about our boilers, they already know about our roofs, to allow them to help the district going forward to coordinate all of those efforts. So some of what they'll be providing in efficiencies, not only knowing our building, but what they're going to help us is helping us hire professional staff that we'll need over that period of time, helping us put together efficient RFPs. For example, as we did in the beginning of the bond issue, when you'll recall that they had us put out one RFP for all of the HVAC equipment that we would need for five years and lock in that pricing. So they'll be helping us with some of those sorts of activities, looking at whether we need an architect and a CM to do a roof project, or do we just need a professional roofing operator to do that and provide that service. So there is a cost upfront, as we talked about, in terms of paying Plant Moran Cressa for that service. However, we do expect that there will be some efficiencies and savings in the long run, as they help us do this, do our projects in the most efficient and effective way possible over the next five years. So again, the recommendation is to hire them at a cost of $10,000 per month, and it's about, roughly about a 3% fee, and we expect to save, hope to save at least some of those fees from not having to hire as many architects and CMs in the long term. We also think it'll make our projects more effective and efficient as we go forward. So with that long explanation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All righty. Other questions from the board? And again, this is one where we had lengthy discussion last week about this, so it makes some sense, I don't have a whole lot of questions tonight. Mr. Centers?
I'd just like to make a comment that we have a phenomenal central office staff, but no one is really a certified builder or developer. So we have, also, we have a vacancy in some engineering that we did not have before. So this is really a good service for us. With a dwindling central office staff, we're trying to save a little bit of money there. We really need someone to fill that void, and they've done that very nice in the bond work, and we have all the confidence they'll do a very nice job with the sinking fund.
Thank you very much, Mr. Centers. Are there other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 7H, approval of change order for owner's representative, 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education approve the change order for the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, for the 2013 bond, for a total increase of $169,400 and an adjusted contract amount of $2,794,400.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Ms. Abby?
Good evening again. Thank you so much.
Hello again.
Back to the 2013 bond. As we have throughout the course of the last two years on the 2013 bond, when we have change orders that are over our accounting limit, we do bring those forward to the Board of Education for discussion and ask for approval. This one is for the professional services of Plant Moran Cressa. As we discussed in our committee meeting last week, when we went out to bid for, for owner's representative and awarded that to Plant Moran Cressa, their bid was actually a range of percentage points, depending on how much construction work was going to be done. That was awarded, and at that time, we had projected $150 million in construction. We are now projecting, based on the many discussions that we've had, $178 million of construction. So 195 million doesn't change, that never goes away, but we'll be doing more of that in construction and less of that in some of the items you saw tonight, like purchase of equipment or technology. Everything is still within the 2013 bond, but when we went out to bid for construction, or for owner's representative, excuse me, we had not yet had the board, the board, the community had not yet approved the bond. So at that time, 150 million was an estimate. Now that we've obviously tightened up all of our budgets for all of our projects, we know it's 178 million. So that's a long way of saying that we had to adjust the fee for Plant Moran Cressa because they're actually managing more construction work. They don't manage the equipment or that. You'll notice that there's not a recommendation for Plant Moran Cressa on the string equipment. That's something the district did without their services. So two changes, one is for the increase in construction. That actually ended up a very small amount of an increase, less than $10,000. And then also, because we elongated the project by about a year, we've also agreed to play, pay Plant Moran Cressa their services for that extra year. So you see that amount as well, and that's detailed in your bid packet, and we did have a discussion. So those two together are the $169,400 increase. $160,000 for the increased time that they'll be working, or $20,000 a month, and then the $9,400 for the change order based on the increased construction. So it, we did have an opportunity to talk about this. It does make sense, it is reasonable. We are asking them to work additional months at the end of the bond. It's not the same level of work that they're doing, it'll be a tail end, so it's not the same amount of staff that they would have today, otherwise it would be more than $20,000 a month. But that is what we negotiated, based on what our expectation of their workload will be at the end of the bond. So with that, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions from board members? No. Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is 7I, approval of sale of property, Washington. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the attached resolution for the sale of property to Reno J. Suave and Leo Suave on behalf of an entity to be formed whereby Rio J. Suave and Leo Suave, on behalf of the entity to be formed, have offered to purchase 9449 Hicks Road, Livonia, Michigan property, also known as Washington, for a total of $900,000. And also move that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent and his or her designee to execute the offer and any documents necessary and incidental to the sale.
Support. We have a motion on the table by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Dr. Leep, I believe you're going to be addressing this item?
Yes, thank you very much. As you know, we've been talking for quite some time now about the management of our vacant properties. As you know, these are, these are both assets and resources, and for our school district would also have to be maintained and taken care of. And so we've talked about what's the best use moving forward, what makes the most sense in regards to being fiscally responsible. And after many, many months, and actually years of discussion this past year, you all approved, after discussion, the hiring of a real estate consultant to help us determine what our options are and what our opportunities are with this property. And after study, those, the real estate consultant came back to us and talked about potentially starting with the sale of Nankin Mills and Washington properties. Now, in the meantime, you'll recall that we had community forums, talking about our budget, upcoming budget for next year, and a high priority from our community was that we look at revenue enhancement in any way that we can to help us maintain programs in our school district. And they identified specifically the sale of property as something that they could live with in regards to providing additional resources to our school district. And so that, in conjunction with the study that's been going on for quite some time, led us to actually doing RFPs for these two particular pieces of property. And in doing so with these RFPs, we did ask that if they were going to be developed, that we would look at developers who would put single-family homes together in their proposals, would also look at creating some green space in those properties. And we were fortunate enough to receive several proposals. And so we've been analyzing those proposals. As you know, you met earlier tonight in closed session to hear the written legal opinion from our attorneys, which helped us to understand these proposals that were provided to the Board of Education. And here we are now in open session to actually deliberate on a recommendation that we have for you. And our recommendation first is to enter into a purchase agreement with Reno J. and Leo Sauve for the Washington property, and the price we were able to get was $900,000. And so we're making that recommendation, and I'll handle both of these items if it's okay together in regards to explanation. The other recommendation that we have for you tonight is to enter into a purchase agreement with Frederick Nassar for the Nankin Mills property at a price of $475,000. We are pleased that the proposals submitted exceeded our budget estimates, and so that was a real positive. I would highlight that in both cases, the individuals that were recommending receive the bids were the highest offer that we received. In both cases, the developments proposed were for single-family homes with some added green space, and so that was important to us. Again, in both cases, the developer is experienced in developing single-family residential developments, and we think that's important. And so as we also know, the purchase agreements that we would like to enter into is subject to getting the appropriate approvals through city planning, et cetera. And so there is a process that we have to go through before we actually close on the property and receive the payment. Each proposal does include a $25,000 deposit in good faith to assure that the individuals who are bidding on the properties were serious about the proposals they were bringing forward. And so we do recommend that we go ahead and accept and enter into the purchase agreements with these two companies. If you so approve these recommendations tonight, let me just spend a minute on what the next steps would be. And so what would happen after tonight is that the developer would start to work on securing all the necessary approvals and doing all of their due diligence on the property to make sure that the development is feasible. As we heard tonight, we anticipate that that would be about a 180-day process, and so we're looking at approximately six months to compete, complete that due diligence work. In addition, as we promised the communities in those areas, we would have a meeting for them to discuss these developments. And so, again, the nice part of bringing the resident, the recommendation at this point in time is that we'll be able to actually be very clear with the residents in the area what type of development we're looking at, and we can actually have the developers there meeting with the neighbors to talk about what they're looking at doing. And so that would be the next step that would occur, and then hopefully sometime within the next 180 days or so, we would be in a position to close on the properties and receive the cash, which, as you know, is very important, because we have budgeted for revenues for the sale of property in our budget for this year. So again, the recommendations are pretty straightforward. It is certainly a result of a lot of hard work, and we want to recognize our real estate consultant, Bill Moeman, who's done a remarkable job. We were mentioning that if it was up to Lisa and I, not that we wouldn't have worked hard on it, but our ability to bring this much revenue into the school district with these two potential property sales and the quality of people that are going to do the work, I, I just don't think we could have done it. So that was a wise investment on the board's behalf, and we're excited to get moving on this and would recommend approval. And certainly Lisa, Lisa or I can answer any questions that you may have.
All righty. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. Just for the public's information, from what the board's been told, and Dr. Leep and Ms. Abby can confirm, that there are no additional bond funds owed on these two properties.
Correct. Yes, we've reviewed that with our legal counsel, and we believe that's the position, Moran, yes.
I'm sorry?
We have reviewed that with our legal counsel, and we believe that's the correct position, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board? All righty, we have a motion from Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is, as Dr. Leep said, is a related item. Item 7J, approval of sale of property, Nankin Mills. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the attached resolution for the sale of property to Frederick Nassar on behalf of an entity to be formed, whereas Frederick Nassar on behalf of the entity to be formed has offered to purchase 8,100 Hubbard Road, Westland, Michigan, property also known as Nankin Mills, for the total of $475,000, and also move that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent and his/her designee to execute the offer and any documents necessary and the incidental to the sale.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. Dr. Leepa, is there anything you'd like to add on this property?
Nope.
Okay, covered on, covered both properties in the first set of comments. Are there any questions from the board? All righty. We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we get on to a whole lot more fun things, the ones that I'm sure all of you are waiting for. Personnel matters. The next item on our agenda is item 8A, appointment of federal programs coordinator. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Cynthia Pearson as federal programs coordinator, beginning with the 2015-16 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And Dr. Leepa, would you like to address this item?
Yes, actually, we're very excited to bring a variety of recommendations to the Board of Education tonight with the appointment of several administrative positions with some outstanding individuals. And I want to just start out by thanking my colleagues to the right and several members of our Leeds administrative team, who spent countless hours doing interviews over the last month and a half. Steve Archibald told me, I think it was last week, that he thinks he's been in 53 interviews in the past, in the past several weeks. And so, it's been a Herculean effort, and it's been coordinated by Dana Winery, who, along with leading the superintendent search as the board liaison, and also getting a couple of contracts over the last few weeks, literally has worked every day of the summer so far. And when I say every day, I'm talking about Saturday and Sunday.
Oh, I know, we got emails on Sunday from him. It did not go unnoticed.
And so, Dana's done a phenomenal job to coordinate this entire effort, and it's led to really bringing quality candidates forward to the Board of Education. The recommendations tonight, when we added, when I added up very quickly ahead, I think we had either near to or over 200 applicants for the positions that were, that are being recommended to you. And so, we had a very strong response to the openings, and the people here tonight are the strongest of a very strong group. So, they should feel very good about that and should be congratulated for sure. We'll start with the federal programs coordinator. We're very pleased to recommend Cindy Pearson to come and be part of the team. She'll be filling the role that was previously held by Phil Francins. And depending on who you talk to, those are either big shoes or small shoes to fill, I don't know. A little laughter, come on, we gotta haze. Phil Littlebetty's the new person on cabinet, so we gotta give him a little bit of a hard time. Cindy's gonna do a great job. She comes with great credentials. She has a BA in, actually, learning disabilities from Madonna University, also a master's from Madonna in administration. She's been an elementary support teacher for the past many years, which, as you know, is the key person that provides support in so many different areas at the elementary K-4 level, a very, very important role in our school district, and also has experience in Title I, which of course is a big part of this job that she will be filling. She's filled in as acting principal at the building, has also been a special education teacher consultant in the past, and is just a very, very good person. And we're very pleased to recommend Cindy to be hired tonight for this position.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
We have, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. Cindy, would you like to come on up and address the board, the public, in your new role?
I thank you, Dr. Leepa. I appreciate the introduction, and I'd like to thank the Livonia Board of Education for this opportunity. I am very excited and ready for the challenge. They are big shoes to fill. I will say that, I've sat in many meetings with them. I'm very lucky to have some of my wonderful colleagues, who I call my friends here, supporting me tonight as I transition from Roosevelt over to the board office, and a very heartfelt thank you to my family, my husband Eric, my son Max, my daughter Jenna, and my mom, who said, "The one thing you need to give yourself is the gift of education," and I did. So, thank you very much to everyone for my position tonight. I'm very, very happy.
Thank you. Congratulations. The next item on our agenda is item 8B, appointment of high school principal, I'm sorry, I misspoke, appointment of high school assistant principal. You've got a lot of hires going on this summer.
President Burton?
Yes, Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and employ Carla Halvengas as high school assistant principal, beginning August 11, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield and Dr. Leepa.
Yes, we're very pleased to bring forward the recommendation of Carla Halvengas to be an assistant principal at Churchill High School. Carla has spent her entire career at Churchill High School and is about as loyal a person as you're ever going to find to that institution. She comes to us with a bachelor's from Alma College, a master's degree in curriculum from Oakland University, and also a specialist in leadership from Oakland University, very, very well-known within the Churchill community, and she has a wide variety of background experiences since she's been there in 1994. Very strong curriculum background and was certainly a curriculum leader in the school when she was an English, English language arts teacher and a department chair. In the most recent years, she's been the student activities coordinator, and we know that that takes on a whole different life in regards to the life of what a high school looks like. And if I started listing the activities that she's been involved with at Churchill High School, we'd be here for quite a while. One thing that you don't know about Carla is that earlier tonight, she said hello to my brother, who was here, who went to Alma College, and they went to college together. So, Carla knows things about my family that I really wish she didn't know. And so, she has that the whole over my head, but she's a remarkable person and is going to be a really solid administrator, and we're very pleased to bring this recommendation to you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the board? No. All right, seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. Halvengas, Carla, would you like to come up and say hello to the public in your new role?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Leepa, for the kind words. I would like to start by introducing my son Nathan, my son Stephen, and my husband Bill, who has been incredibly supportive this whole way, especially after I convinced him that I would not be taking the early retirement incentive. Then he became more, more supportive. I'm very, very excited to be here. Dr. Leepa gave some of my past experiences, but I will just go through that again for you. I want to begin, of course, by thanking the interview committee, Dr. Leepa, Mr. Winery, and you, the board, for giving me this wonderful opportunity. As Dr. Leepa mentioned, I have been a Charger for 21 years, the first 16 years as a member of the English Department, and the last five as student activities director. And as student activities director, I always introduced myself to the parents and students at freshman orientation by telling them how long I've been at Churchill, and I always follow it up with saying, "And I wouldn't want to be anywhere else." So, my 21 years at Churchill has been just a tremendous experience. I've had the good fortune of working with our fantastic students and our outstanding staff, and now I'm looking forward to this new role as part of the administrative team. So, I would like to thank you again for giving me this new opportunity, and go Chargers.
Congratulations. The next item on our agenda is 8C, appointment of high school assistant principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and employ Nicole Hunter as high school assistant principal, beginning August 11, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonald and Dr. Leepa.
Thank you very much. Actually, Nicole has quite an interesting background. She has a bachelor's degree from Albion and went on to get her law degree before she became a teacher with, at Wayne State University. She also subsequently went on to get a master's degree in education leadership at Mary Grove and has been a teacher since 2003, but a teacher with us since 2007. She's been a remarkable addition to the staff, again, involved in so many things at the school, we really couldn't list them all. But one thing I would mention about Nicole is, boy, you just need to talk to her for about 10 minutes, minutes to understand her commitment to kids and her commitment to education. It's absolutely contagious. And again, if you didn't see tonight, she and my son were actually waving at each other and sort of pointing at each other, which means she knows things about my family that I wish she didn't know also. But we won't, we won't go there. Nicole has a remarkable relationship with kids, and the students that she has touched, she still stays in touch with well after they graduate, and she's a special person, and we're lucky to bring her onto the administrative team at Churchill High School.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? All righty, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. Hunter, would you like to come on up and address the public in your new role?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to introduce my family. We're back in the corner, we have little ones. So, I have, my husband Dan is back there, and my daughter Macy, and Morgan and Max, my son is there also. So, that's my family that has been so patiently waiting for this moment, and was dancing in the background when you said my name. So, thank you. I'd also like to thank everybody on the interview team, Dr. Leepa, for having me. I know it was a long process, and I really, really appreciate it. I have been at Stevenson for my career, and I'm really excited to now be a Charger. So, oh, you guys are gonna make me cry. Thank you so much. Again, I absolutely love this district. I love Livonia, and I'm very excited for my new role and to help students in this district. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Our next item is item 8D, appointment of middle school assistant principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and employ Shannon Wheeler as a middle school assistant principal, beginning August 11, 2015.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Laura and Dr. Leepa.
Thank you very much. Our last secondary recommendation tonight is for Ms. Shannon Wheeler to join our administrative ranks at Frost Middle School. Shannon comes to us with really a lot of background. She is prepared very hard to be an administrator, and she, her educational background is a bachelor's from Madonna University. She has a master's degree for University of Michigan Dearborn, and also an educational specialist's degree from Oakland. She's been teaching with our district since 2002. She's taken advantage of a variety of internship and administrative academy-type of opportunities to prepare herself to be an administrator, including the countywide program for administrative training, the Inspiring Administrators Academy. Also, she's taken advantage of administrative shadowing experiences. She's been on district-wide committees such as the District School Improvement Team, and you all know how important that group is to the ongoing work of the school district, and just a variety of different activities at the school. Simply put, you're not going to find a harder worker than Shannon, and I know she's gonna come with a lot of enthusiasm to this job. Between her and Tony, we're gonna have to keep him harness back a little bit. But I think we'll be able to do it, and we'd certainly rather have that than the other way around. They're gonna be a dynamic team, and she's gonna, I know, work so hard on behalf of the kids at Frost, so we're very pleased to bring this recommendation to you.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And Mrs. Wheeler, would you like to come up and say hello to the public in your new role?
Sure. I just wanted to say that thank you so much. This opportunity is one that I have worked for a very long time. Years ago, when I was hired as a teacher in Livonia, I told Jack Bowman, I said, "You know I'm gonna bother you to give me a job." So, I'm just, you're gonna keep seeing me, and, you know, he relented and gave me a job as a teacher in the district. And pretty much, you could probably ask Steve, he was my next target, and I pretty much bothered him until he decided that I could have an administrative job. I have been working at Franklin High School for a very long time, and I can attribute a lot of what I have learned to Buzz Stuffus, was the first guy, we're going back a little bit, and he saw a leadership style that I had, that he said, "You know, one day you're gonna be a principal," and I told him at that point that he was crazy. And he said, "No, you have it. There's something there. You love these kids. You work for kids." So, that kind of planted the seed, and as I moved on, I had a wonderful opportunity to work with Dan Willenborg, who you cannot ask for a nicer man with more integrity. I've loved working for him. I did an internship with Mr. Keith McDonald, and that was very eye-opening, kind of getting me used to that position. Cindy Demann has always made me critique my wardrobe, so for her, I'd like to thank her, even though she's not here anymore. Definitely a strong woman who had a presence, and that impressed me quite a bit. And I've loved my experience here, working for the district, working with Andrea, working with Sheila. It has been a great opportunity for me to be here. So, I am unbelievably excited to go back to Frost, where I student-taught 15 years ago. So, I began my teaching career there, I'll begin my administrative career there. Very interesting how things kind of play out. So, thank you so much. I will work very hard. I'll make you guys famous, one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. The next item on our agenda is 8E, appointment of upper elementary school assistant principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and employ Christina Collier as an upper elementary assistant principal, beginning August 18, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson. Dr. Leepa?
Yes, we're very proud to recommend to you the first of two 5-6 assistant principals tonight, and Christine Collier, a remarkable educator, who has a bachelor's of arts from Madonna, also a master's degree from Madonna, both in administration and in autism. She's done that to just expand her background in regards to how to support kids. She's taken on a variety of leadership opportunities also, including being part of the Galileo Teacher Leader Consortium. She's been in EST since 2010, the same job that I had mentioned earlier, that is such a key component in what our K-4 schools look like, has also acted as an acting administrator, and has taken on multiple building leadership roles. We see her as a great fit for Cooper because she was one of the leaders in the, bringing the Leader Me program to Randolph, and so she was going to be able to continue that important work at Cooper, and we think that will be a great fit. Christie comes with a great administrative lineage, I will say, and is going to be a remarkable addition to our administrative team, based on all the things that she's accomplished in her time with Livonia.
Thank you. Are there any, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Laura?
President Burton, and my fellow board members, in accordance with our board policy, since the candidate is my daughter, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, other than congratulations to your family?
Thank you.
All righty. Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura abstains. Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And Mrs. Collier, would you like to come on up and address the board and the public in your new role?
Thank you so much for having me, President Burton, Livonia School Board Cabinet, and the Livonia community. I am so excited to have this opportunity. Is it showing? I am so excited. Thank you. I've worked long and hard to become an administrator, and I'm very excited to take on this role. When I was thinking about addressing the board, a Mother's Day card came to mind from When I was thinking about addressing the board, a Mother's Day card came to mind from my daughter, Ava, and it talks about what she notices about me. And she talks about how -- and I thought, "Oh, no, what does she notice about me?" But it talks about how I take her to Pam, and how I make her meals, and, you know, work with her during her homework time. And then I thought, this kind of relates to Livonia. I've noticed a lot of things about Livonia.
All good.
All good. But Livonia Public Schools has taught me so much. I've come from Livonia Public Schools. I've gotten my education here, graduated from Stevenson. And Livonia has taught me how to collaborate. They've taught me how to love students, how to teach students, and just be a team. And I thank you so much for that. There are so many wonderful friendships that I have made here, and I just thank you for that also. I want to just take a minute to say thank you to my family, my mother. When I was 16, I swore I was never going to become a teacher. I swore I was never going to take after her, and I'm following in her footsteps, and I'm grateful for that. She is a wonderful role model, and I could not be prouder. My stepdad, Joe, he's always a phone call away. He's part of my village, and I love him dearly. He has taught me so much, and I'm glad that he is a part of my life. My husband, Dan, he just puts up with our crazy schedules, and he goes with the flow. He loves me unconditionally, and I appreciate that. My daughter, Ava, is nine. She will be at Riley -- oh, 10! She turned 10 two days ago. She's 10 years old, and she's going to be at Riley Elementary School, Upper Elementary School, and she's the love of my life. She teaches me how to be patient and kind, and she teaches me how to grow every day. My son, Ian, is in England right now, well, in Germany right now, with Global Ed and Stevenson High School. So, we will be taping this for him, and we will show this to him when he comes back. So, thank you so much. I'm so excited to be a part of Cooper, and I see Sarah over there. I'm welcome, and I'm getting ready to know the staff, the students, and all the parents. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and congratulations. The next item on our agenda tonight is Item 8F, Appointment of Upper Elementary School Assistant Principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and employ Abby Kidder as an upper elementary assistant principal, beginning August 18, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Centers. Dr. Leepa?
Thank you very much, and our last recommendation tonight is just an outstanding candidate, Abby Kidder, who is going to be going to Riley as the assistant principal. Abby has a bachelor's degree from Walden and a master's degree in education and leadership from Western. She has many, many teaching experiences over her career at a variety of different schools and grade levels, including the middle school. And so, she's taught just about every grade from the lowest levels right up to the middle school for us, and has done a phenomenal job in each one of her different roles. She also is an elementary support teacher. She's doing that at Grant right now, and has learned a whole lot about what it means to support staff and families in that role. She's also been on the district communications team, and again, so many activities at the building level that we just can't measure -- mention them at all. And I have to tell you, when we were interviewing Abby, she was just so excited about becoming an administrator and taking on this new role and taking on this new challenge. I wish we could have told her right then, and I had to say that till Dana did all his legwork, and we could finalize the recommendation. But she's gonna be coming in also with just a great deal of enthusiasm, and she's gonna do an outstanding job.
Excellent. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And Ms. Kidder, would you like to come on up to the podium and say hello to the folks in your new role?
Yes, I would. I'm bottling my excitement, but...
You can let it out now.
No, that's all right. I don't want to overwhelm everyone. But I do want to thank Dr. Leepa and the cabinet, and of course, the school board for this opportunity. I am thrilled. I'm so excited. I've wanted this for so long, so I'm very excited to be standing in front of you today, accepting this position. I'm so excited to get to know the Riley community, and the staff, and the students, and to show them my excitement and how great the school year is going to be. I've heard wonderful things about Riley, and I just want to get in there and experience it for myself. I want to thank my family, my mom Judy, and my daughter Paige, who is standing, showing her excitement. My other daughter, Lindsay, and my husband, Jonathan. We do have a two-year-old son, but he's a little busy, and he would have probably turned over every chair and knocked over the podium by now. So, he's at home with a sitter. But again, thank you so much for this opportunity. I couldn't be more excited, so thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you. The next item on our agenda is 8G, Approval of Compensation for Interim Superintendent. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District set the salary of the interim superintendent to be Step 1 of the superintendent's salary schedule. This will be paid on a per diem basis for the number of days the interim superintendent holds the position. Also move that the fringe benefits and leave time will be based on the current cabinet contract of the interim superintendent.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. This is something that the board has -- would come to expect normally. This is -- what this means on a regular -- on a basis for the public to understand is that this is the base salary of the superintendent, without any extras, any steps, any longevity, any doctorate pay, et cetera. And this would be the pay difference between the individual's current pay schedule and the superintendent's schedule on a daily basis. We are hopeful to have a permanent superintendent in the position quite soon. Are there any questions or comments from the board? We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is 8H, Teachers for Recall. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent and recall to district employment as teachers for the 2015-2016 school year, persons listed on the attached document dated July 27, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald and Mr. Winery. Would you like to address this item?
Thank you. Following the board authorization on June 8, 2015, begin the recall procedure, the process was initiated. The attached document that you have before you contains the names of two individuals who have been recalled. In addition, one teacher has resigned, and four teachers have been removed from the obligation list. This leaves 20 persons remaining on layoff from the June 8, 2015, layoff list, five persons from the June 2014, layoff list, two persons from the June 3, 2013, layoff list, and one person from the June 4, 2012, layoff list, and one person remaining on the layoff from June 7, 2010. These positions, the two positions before you, are within the 2015-2016 budget guidelines, so we recommend the board approve the motion on the floor to recall the two teachers submitted for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is 8I, Leaves of Absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the request for leaves of absence as listed below. Sarah Martin, effective 2015-2016 school year. Randy Verkeen, effective 2015-2016 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Winery, would you like to address this item?
Just like to add that the LEA labor agreement provides for employees to be able to request and be granted leaves of absence, and these two employees would qualify.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? We need another sheet of paper. It's been a long night. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It is my pleasure, for the last time, to address -- or to ask Dr. Leepa to address this as the superintendent of Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you very much, and actually, no comments tonight, other than just to say thank you to the many, many people I've come into contact with over the past 21 years, especially our staff. We have a remarkable staff here and a remarkable family that is committed to taking care of kids every day, and we're very proud of them. We're very proud that, over the years, we have not privatized our employees. And so, from 1 to 1,000, or actually, well, more than 1,000, we're a team, and we're a family, and if I've had any success, it's because of their daily work. So, thanks to them, and that would be it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Please do. For those who may not know at home, this is Peggy Leepa, wife of Dr. Leepa.
I'd just like to thank the board and the central office staff, and the teachers, and the community. 21 years is a long time. And I would just like to thank you for giving Randy the opportunity to do what his passion is, to service kids, and to do what he does best. He's got such a strong work ethic and such a strong knowledge of the financing and funding that goes on with the schools. I also want to thank the community for helping with my family. We have three children that were -- came to Livonia Public Schools in 2003, and right away, we were welcomed, and the teachers that helped all of our children were just phenomenal. My oldest came in very excited, and coming in as a ninth grader, and we were talking with the counselors, and, you know, I was telling them, you know, "She's a kid that watches CNN instead of watching MTV," you know? And so, they immediately, you know, worked with her, and they saw her interest was global, you know, global policy, global travel. She just, as a little kid, when we took her to gymnastics camps, and back when the American gymnasts won the, you know, titles, and it was all -- everybody was excited about the Olympians, and so we sent her to gymnastics camp, and all the other little girls were crying as they left their parents, and she's like, "See ya," you know? But she -- we knew then, I mean, she wanted to travel that part of the United States, but she also wanted to travel the world. And so, this global education program was unbelievable for her. And then, she decided that, you know, we worked a lot with some of the counselors and some of the teachers, because she had -- she was a various academically-oriented student, and she'd gotten through all the French program at the end of her junior year, and she had the senior year where there was, you know, nothing left to take. And so, she, you know, talked to some of her counselors and says, "Well, I want to use this French in my -- for my real life, and I want -- I don't want to lose a year." And so, they created a program for her, an independent study, where she could continue on with that French, so she wouldn't lose it. And so, and as we speak today, she is -- that's one of the reasons why she does so well in her job, she is able to use that French. She's fluent in French, and she works with many of the different groups at the United Nations and everything else, over pursuing her passion, which is global policy. And my middle daughter, I can't say enough, you know, Randy said she graduated from Michigan State. We're very proud parents, because we were, you know, we were told when she was four years old that, you know, she was given a diagnosis on the autism spectrum, and, you know, we were basically, you know, told that we'd hope for the best. When we came to Livonia, we were just welcomed, and a lot of work was done with her teachers and her counselors, and she made it. She graduated, was it, two months ago? And she starts a job Monday. My last child, he's my social child. He actually used to be very shy around adults, and I just -- we just watched him grow, and a lot of it was, I think, some of the influence of the classes and teachers he had. And it was really interesting, being a parent on the other side of the parent-teacher conferences, because, you know, they were -- the teachers were sitting across from Randy, and they were saying things like, "Oh, you know, he's really social." I said, "So, in other words, he talks all the time." But we watched him to grow into just a phenomenal young man, and I just look at, you know, we've been with Livonia for 21 years now, and I think the development of our kids were so much in part related to the community, the staff, the relationships that my children were able to develop with their teachers. And, you know, lastly, people often ask me, you know, "How does Randy do it? How does -- he stays so calm? How does he have such a strong work ethic?" And that all stemmed from his parents, and they'd be very proud. So, again, I'd like to thank the board, the teachers, the community, for what you've done for our family over the last 21 years.
Thank you. Peggy, I don't normally speak on behalf of the board unless the board has directed me to, but I'm going to take that liberty tonight. And on behalf of the board and the community, I want to very sincerely thank you and your family for the vast amount of time that you gave up with Randy to allow him to be here. And by "here," I mean here, all over the community. Board members get a copy of Dr. Leepa's schedule on a weekly basis, and Monday through Thursday, I think it was probably pretty rare to see him walk in your door before 9:00 at night, and that's after starting at 7:00 in the morning. Don't share that with superintendent applicants for our benefit, please. But that's the truth. That's what -- that's what being a really great superintendent means. And the amount of time that your family was willing to sacrifice with Randy allowed him to be a really great superintendent, and allowed our community to thrive in our public school system because of that. And you have my very sincere thanks. The next item on our agenda, we do have a couple of business items before we have hearing from board members. The next item is Item 10A, Approval of Resolution Requesting the Wayne County Clerk to Call a Special Election for Schoolcraft Community College Millage Proposal. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution to request that the Wayne County Clerk, as the district's filing official, call a special election for the Schoolcraft Community College District on Tuesday, November 3, 2015, for Schoolcraft's millage proposal.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Dr. Leepa, would you address this, please?
Yes. As we discussed at committee last week, there's actually a law that dates back to the 1930s that requires this rather perfunctory measure of the Board of Education. It requires school districts that are within the boundaries of a community college to actually file with the clerk a resolution that Schoolcraft College passed that allows them to call an election. Why school districts have to do this, I really don't have a clue. Why they can't just send the resolution directly to the clerk goes beyond me, other than it's related to a law that goes a long, long ways back. And we did have this verified with our legal counsel, and indeed, we do have to do this. This is not any type of approval or endorsement of the request. That's not our responsibility. It's just a perfunctory legal responsibility, and the attached motion allows us to meet that obligation. And so, we ask that the board do that, so Schoolcraft can go about their business. We certainly do wish them their best in their request for six tenths of one mill that will be on the ballot this upcoming November, and certainly, if you want any more information about that particular ballot proposal, you can contact Schoolcraft College, and I'm you can contact Schoolcraft College, and I'm sure they'll be getting information out shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion on, uh, that was offered by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 10B is First Reading of Board Policy, uh, First Reading of Board Policy, KA Public Relations Program. Dr. Leepa, would you like to address this item?
Yes. Uh, this particular policy, again, we discussed in committee last week, and what we wanted to do with the additions to this policy is clarify our intent to garner community feedback in the, in the safest environment that we possibly can for those that we're trying to garner feedback from. And so, uh, the policy will emphasize the board's desire to provide strong channels of communication with the community. Uh, it also respects the requirements under the Open Meetings Act, and so what it does is it actually outlines options for the Board of Education, uh, when a meeting to garner community feedback is held, and it's, and it is not a technical, uh, open meeting under the board's requirements under the law. So then, you can decide whether you want to have those meetings either audio or video recorded. And again, the reason to do that is to really protect the people, uh, that want to come and want to provide feedback for us. We want to provide the safest environment that we can for them. So, that's the purpose of the added language that you have before you that we discussed in committee last week.
Alrighty. Are there any questions from board members? Mrs. McDonald?
Um, thank you, President Burton. Um, I am not totally sure if I'm going to be supporting this, um, change in this board policy, just because of the video options. I'm still not sure if it's something that I'll be supporting.
Okay, we, okay. And we will be putting this next week, and we're not putting it right now.
Correct, but I just wanted to let you, let you know.
Okay, alrighty. Any other comments from board members? Alrighty. Uh, this will be put on our next, uh, regular meeting agenda for a vote. The next item on our agenda is 10C, First Reading of Board Policy, KN Public Complaints. Uh, Dr. Leepa, would you like to address this also?
Yes. Again, we discussed this in committee last week, and what it really does is just, uh, change the language in our existing policy to clarify the intent of the policy, which is to have public complaints addressed at the level as close to their origin as possible, uh, as a practice of day-to-day operating of the school district, yet, uh, recognizes that, under the law and/or board policy, there are certain issues that the Board of Education does stand as the final appeal. Uh, so, this is just a clarification to make sure that we're indeed, uh, having the wording, uh, meet its intent.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board this time? Alrighty, seeing...
Also be on August seventh.
Yes. That, we will put this for a, a second reading and a vote on the August seventeenth. The next and final item on our agenda is Item 10D, Hearing from Board Members. Uh, as is our practice, rather than hearing seven people say thank you, we, uh, generally appoint one individual to speak for the board, and then, uh, certainly, if others would like to add anything, they're welcome to do so. Tonight, uh, Mrs. Jarvis has that, that duty and that privilege for the board.
Thank you, President Burton. Tonight is a momentous occasion. Livonia Public Schools is in the midst of a major transition, which is a sign of growth and change. Tonight, we bid farewell to Dr. Leepa, our superintendent of twenty-one years. It is not possible to overstate his impact on this district, its students' families, its staff, and its administration. Another sign of growth in our district is appointing new administrators in several schools, as well as, uh, positions within the administration of the district. Congratulations to Cynthia Pearson, Carla Halvengas, Nicole Hunter, Shannon Wheeler, Christina Collier, and Abby Kidder. Tonight, we are also happy to recall two teachers. Welcome back. Another sign of growth. Tonight, we authorize several purchases to improve our schools and programs. We authorize purchases ranging from buses to musical instruments and diagnostic testing equipment. These represent the confidence of our citizens in our schools, as many of these are directly attributable to the two thousand thirteen bond fund, which the community approved. After input from our community, we have moved forward with the sale of surplus property, with the hope that new neighborhoods will be created, attracting to our community new families, hopefully with school-aged children. Thank you to our community members who are in attendance here tonight, or through the media, for participating in this momentous evening, and congratulations to all of our honorees tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Would anybody else like to add anything to hearing from board members this evening? I will, uh, it's, it's been one of the more emotional meetings for this board to get through. Uh, it has been the complete spectrum of being thrilled to pieces to welcome so many new folks into positions that they have clearly worked for years, or sometimes decades, to get to, and we are thrilled for you. Uh, at the same time, we're frankly heartbroken to see Dr. Leepa go. Uh, so, if you, you're, you're looking at seven people up here who are feeling a lot of angst right now. Uh, I'm just proud to be a part of this district. I'm proud to be a part of Livonia Public Schools. It has been such a, such a lighthouse district for so many years. Um, I'm thrilled that with the work of Dr. Leepa, and you correctly say, and the entire staff, uh, that we have been able to support public education at a high quality for so many kids for so long, and I absolutely believe we are continuing to do it this, in this coming year, too. Uh, I wish you all a very, very nice summer, and on a personal, I thought I could say this, on a personal note, I would say, be careful who you date in high school, because you just might marry them. Uh, yes, I, you too, huh? Yeah. Uh, I would like to offer my congratulations to my son Connor. It's been too, too emotional of an evening. Uh, and his lovely fiancee Clara LeBlanc, who have dated since Stevenson High School, and...
Oh.
See, I'll get it out. Give me a second. And became engaged this weekend. So, it's been a lot of stuff going on lately. Anyway, thank you so much, and we have come to the end of our, uh, our agenda. Have a nice evening and a wonderful, safe summer. Thank you.
[applause]